Good morning, everyone. Welcome and thank you for participating in the Know Your Candidate Forum sponsored by the Georgetown Cultural Citizens Memorial Association and the Southeast Georgetown Community Council, lovingly known as GCCMA and SEGCC respectively. My name is Regina Durden. I'm with GCCMA and I will be your moderator for this session. Mr. Chuck Collins with SEGCC will be our producer extraordinaire and we'll be monitoring our questions and keeping time for us. This morning, we're going to be taking some time out for you to get to know the candidates running for Georgetown Independent School District Trust Board of Trustees Place Five. Our candidates for this session is our incumbent, Ms. Melanie Dunham. Hello, Melanie.
Good morning, everybody.
And Mr. Eric Robinson. Hello, Mr. Robinson.
Hello, Ms. Durden.
Thank you both for being here with us this morning and taking time out to answer some questions for the community. This is an important election, 2020, and the way you answered and responded to these questions will help make decisions as people go out to vote. So thank you both for being here. Before I begin, I have a few announcements that I have. First, I want to let everyone know that in order to preserve the quality of the video, we're going to mute everyone. The forum is being recorded and will be posted on the GCCMA and the SEGCC websites. If you have questions that you want to ask the candidates, we're asking you to go to Slido, www.slido.com, number nine, I'm sorry, number W944. If you notice in the chat box, there is a link to Slido that will take you directly to the candidate forum questions. The questions will be asked based on popularity in Slido. Therefore, if you see a question that you like that's already posted, please hit the thumbs up icon. The more popular the question, the more likely it will be asked. And then we ask that you not ask the questions in the Q and A or the chat box, but instead go to Slido. Now for the format, the forum will begin with the two candidates given two minutes to offer opening statements. Then we'll ask a series of questions and each candidate will be given a maximum of three minutes to respond to each question. We will continue asking questions as time allows. The candidates were given some questions beforehand and we expect to go through those questions, but those questions may change if the audience has more pressing questions and it becomes popular. Got that candidates? So let us begin with the introductions. Each candidate will begin with two minutes to introduce themselves and that should include your background, why you're seeking the position, and what do you see are the major duties and responsibilities in this role. Ms. Dunham, we'll start with you and your two minutes begin now.
My name is Melanie Dunham. I'm running for reelection to place five of the Board of Trustees. And I grew up in Round Rock. My mom was a single mother. She worked for the police department. She raised three of us on her own and I was a free and reduced lunch kid, had a lot of extra time on my hands. And it was teachers who really showed me that I had more potential than I was really learning at home and really gave me the time and attention and love that I needed to succeed. So I went on to be the first in my family to graduate from college. And I work in nonprofits, so I help really vulnerable people get the things that they need. Veterans and first responders, people facing rare medical diagnoses, a lot of really sick kids and adults. So my work is centered around helping people professionally. I have four daughters, three of them are current GIST students. We moved to Georgetown and I think 2004 and we moved to Old Town. So my kiddos went to Annie Pearl. I still have a kiddo at Annie Pearl. It's where, you know, our home base is. And so I really spent a lot of my time helping families in the Annie Pearl area. So living and working and volunteering have been kind of what I've been doing for the past 15 years in Georgetown. I've served on a lot of nonprofits, nonprofit boards, education foundation, Boys and Girls Club, every PTA, of course. And I love volunteering with our community and helping the families that need us the most. So it's my privilege to serve and be a part of this community in this way.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Mr. Robinson, your two minutes begin now.
Okay. Thank you so much again for hosting this. Again, I'm Eric Robinson and a little bit about me. I grew up in the Appalachian Mountains in North Carolina. My father was the first person to go to college in our family. Both my grandfathers were coal miners in West Virginia. And so my father spent one year in the coal mines and decided to go in the military. And once finished there, took the GI Bill to get to go to college and became a teacher and a principal and an athletic director, a coach. And I have a brother who's a coach and teacher. And so education is really prominent in my family. I chose to go the route in education as a school psychologist. So I'm trained as a school psychologist, worked in schools in South Carolina, mostly in a district pretty similar to Georgetown ISD, working with children from the most fragile students to the most gifted students, working a lot with teachers and parents. And after that, decided to go back to school and get my PhDs. I'm with the University of Kansas where I earned my PhD. But while in Kansas, I was able to work in Topeka, Kansas as a classroom management consultant. Topeka, Kansas, as we know, was the Brown versus Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, who it's really interesting to get a chance to work in that town, city. I was also able to work at the University of Kansas Medical Center and where I worked with children with autism, did autism assessments and also did an internship at Boystown, which is a residential treatment facility in Nebraska, working with children, juvenile delinquent, pre-juvenile, juvenile delinquent students. I've spent the last 23 years working in Texas, living in Texas, where I teach at Baylor University, where I direct our graduate program in school psychology, which is in the School of Education, and teach teachers and school psychologists. I also did a lot of workshops with teachers and parents. And I think I bring that kind of experience in depth to a school district. I've engaged in a lot of school districts around the country and think I understand kind of the difference in that work well versus those. And my role as a board member is to kind of help ask tough questions and kind of monitor what the superintendent does and hold people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Now we're going to dive into our questions. Let's start by discussing your idea on where we stand right now. With more than 12,000 students in the GIST, the Board of Trustees governs the district by adopting policies and regulations. The key roles and responsibility, according to the GIST website, is to hire and evaluate the superintendent, delegate all administrative responsibilities, approve the district's budget, establish goals and evaluate outcomes, adopt and evaluate policies, and then to communicate with the community. Each year, several times a year, students are to take home a report that provides a grade of how well they did or how they were performing in the classroom. So today, we ask you, on a grading scale of A to F, how would you grade the performance of GIST? This could include student performance, parent and community engagement, looking at the goals of the board, looking at policies established. How would you grade the overall performance of elementary, middle school, and high school levels of education in Georgetown? Mr. Robinson, we'll start with you.
Sure, thank you. You know, I think that some of our schools do better than other schools do. I think if I had to kind of give an overall rating, I would say our schools are kind of like a C, maybe C minus. And because I think our main goal in education is to teach our kid academics. We have a lot of other things that we do. We do some amazing things. We have a great robotics program, great cosmetology. So we have some of our students, I think, do really well in school. And I think they would do really well in most school districts. But I think the charge of the school is to educate all students and really to focus on our most vulnerable students. And vulnerable students mean a lot of things. It could mean students that live in poverty. It could be many students that have a learning disability or some kind of emotional disturbance, mental health issues, cognitive issues. And so our job is as a district to educate all our students as well as we can. And I don't think we do real well there. As we know, the STAR test scores have been dropping last several years. 2019, six of our 16 schools had Ds or Fs and none of them had As and that's uncalled for. We should not have a district with that. A district like GIST should never be in that situation. And I think that's a big issue. Our special education program has been kind of needs improved category, which is kind of a failing category for years and years. And that's another issue that we have to take on. And our discipline referrals have really gone up. When you see students that are struggling academically, it's not surprising to see discipline referrals go up. So those do tend to go hand in hand and we have to do things to address that. You know, we got a score of an 83 back to STAR test. We got a score of an 83 overall in 2019, which rated us as a B. And I know that's been publicized, which is an accurate measure to publicize, but I think it's a little deceptive because most schools in this state or most districts got As and Bs. So when you rank all of that 83, you take this district that had the highest score and the district with the lowest score and you rank all of those 1,202 school districts, we came in 822nd. So 822 out of 1,200 districts was our overall STAR test score. So in other words, 68% of the districts in the state did better than we did. So that's why I kind of say we're like a D, C rating when it comes to that measure. You know, our college career military readiness scores, I think we do better there. We definitely, we score better than the state, but we don't really do any different than the region, region 13. We had about the same score, which I think 70% of our students passed that the last time it was measured. But I think we really, when you kind of dig into the data, we struggle some. Again, our Hispanic students, I think 66% pass. Our African American students, only 43% of our students pass. When you just look at career readiness or college readiness, we have some disparity in kind of our academics area also. And so I would give us overall, again, some schools do better than others, but as a group, I would say we're kind of a C minus as a district and need to improve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Dunham, your three minutes begin now.
I would say that I would probably give the district needs improvement, overall, probably a C. As Eric said, you know, we have an overall rating as a B with TEA. And on its surface, that's not bad, but we do have some schools that were rated Ds and Fs. The problem with this rating system is that it doesn't really take into account a lot of the really great work that's happening for kids that isn't related to the STAR test. So our ACT and SAT scores exceed region and state year over year. Our graduation rates, our attendance rate, our CCMR is leading as well. And I think that those are all really important things. We understand as a district that it is our job to get kids K through 12 educated and onto their best success, whatever that may be. And as public schools, it is our job to take every kiddo that walks through our door and prepare them for the future. And that might mean going to college and it might mean graduating with a certification. It might mean, you know, graduating and going straight into the workforce. Whatever that is, we have to prepare them for that. And so we've really bolstered our CTE programs. We've really bolstered our dual credit and our AP programs. We're doing the things that we need to do to get kids ready. The changes that we've made though are taking some time. We realized, I think in 2018 is when the state changed the rating system and we got those results back and that caused us to pause for a moment. We started looking at data. We started to try to figure out where are the gaps in our education system. So we were looking at curriculum. We were looking at programs. We're looking to make sure that things were implemented with fidelity across the district. That wasn't always happening. So we took a step back to try to find where those deficiencies were. And then we started to implement some changes. We started doing more assessments more frequently throughout the year so that we could better monitor what kids were doing. We didn't want to get to the end of the year to the STAR test and find out that we've made some mistakes. We bolstered our teacher training to make sure that they know how to use the tools that we provide for them, that they are designing engaging work because we know that that's a huge factor in getting kids to be engaged with school and learn the material and then go on to succeed. So we have to make sure that, you know, we are providing an experience that makes kids want to come to school. We need to, you know, help them to be lifelong learners because they're going to need that no matter what they're doing. So for us, you know, we acknowledge that we have made some mistakes. We acknowledge the things that we're doing to make them better, but we aren't going to stop teaching our learner profile, which these global competencies are critical for kids to go on to be successful. They have to communicate. They have to collaborate. They need to be critical thinkers. We're doing those things, but those changes do take time. And I think that it is worth investing in our teachers and kids to do that so that we're successful.
Thank you both so much. Now we're going to move on to COVID and the impact that COVID has had on us. This year has been a year of challenges for our students, the teachers, faculty, administration, and just the community at large. While this has been a new and unusual time for everyone, the effects of the pandemic are truly affecting the students and their families. For example, here in Georgetown, we know that there's a student, there's a family with three students, they're sharing one device. They're trying to do their homework with one device. That is, there's a lack of internet service. There's a lack of appropriate meals for students. Parents are having difficulty with educating their kids at home while then they're fearful of sending their kids back to the classroom. The pandemic has drastically changed the delivery of goods, services, and education. The late, in the late spring and summer could have been a time for retraining our teachers and preparing the parents and the community at large for this transition to online learning. What are your thoughts for guiding and directing the GIST administration to move more aggressively into this new era for education in light of all of these challenges? Ms. Dunham, we'll start with you.
Well, I hope that there isn't a family sharing devices like that because we definitely have Chromebooks for every student and we're ready for that. Our initial purchase of Chromebooks was waylaid by the global market, but we are ready to go. Those are real challenges, especially for our families that live far from their campuses and we're working really hard to make sure that they have the tools and the resources that they need. Kind of getting forced into this model of learning has been good and bad. You know, we were able to really fast track the one-to-one devices that we wanted to be doing for years that was set out in our strategic plan in 2014. We really wanted to offer more remote opportunities, but you know, kind of changing course to something that's a little bit more radical is hard. It's hard for teachers to get on board with. It's hard for the community to get on board with, you know, making those kind of big changes usually takes more time, but being forced to do it all of a sudden has really been a bit of a blessing. That being said, there have been missteps. You know, we're not naturally an online education system. We're a system of schools, brick and mortar, and so it took some time. I will say that our teachers and administrators did a lot of training over the summer. You know, teachers who are not even on contract, we're doing, we're learning and we're answering emails and we're participating and we're gearing up because they want to provide the best experience for kids. I think some ways that we could be more aggressive is, you know, not by telling our teachers and administrators what to do because as the board, that's not our job. You know, we are to provide goals and guidance to really carry our moral imperative of teaching every student forward. So, you know, I would love to see our administrators and our teachers feel empowered to be really creative in the solutions that they're providing to really look at different platforms. I think that we should do better at looking at established online school models. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel. You know, what best practices can we learn from? I think there's some, you know, some hesitance to look at those kind of models because they feel like they're maybe competing for our attention. But really, there's a collaborative opportunity here that we could really explore. And I think that, you know, empowering our district to do those things would be really helpful. I think that we need to be afraid to fail fast and pivot if we're going to have to. I mean, this is learning experience for all of us. None of us have ever been in this situation before. So having some empathy for the mistakes and giving some opportunities to grow is really important. And we need to make sure we don't forget about SEL, you know, making sure that our kids are socially, emotionally healthy, even if they're not in the classroom is critical. And we're definitely working towards that too.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Mr. Robinson, your three minutes begin now.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think COVID, as we know, is significant impact and it's a once a generation. We hope it's once a century event. And in March, you know, I give tons of room for GIST and other districts to kind of figure out what to do when things kind of shut down literally overnight. I have given a little less room for us kind of where we're at now because, you know, we've had several months to kind of plan and that's been some of my concerns is, you know, why don't I watch the May and June board meetings of 2019 and the May and June board meetings for 2020, they seem, they looked a lot alike and they should not have looked alike. We're in a vastly different place. I think we were kind of slow to respond to kind of planning out our future for our kids in the district. In July, to give credit to the board, they had a lot more meetings, a lot of workshops that were streamed so people could see. And I think the board asked a lot of good questions of the superintendent, who in turn would ask questions of his staff. The problem I had with that was sometimes the questions were vague or they weren't well answered and didn't seem to be a lot of follow-up on those things. So I think that's kind of a concern. And we were delayed, as you'd mentioned this, Durden. I've heard the same story of kids using, having to share technology because we were kind of slow to order that. I think we ordered our second batch in July, which was way, way too late in this kind of context. Most districts have been planning or districts that were functioning well, planned well before that. So kind of where we are now, right, kind of where we go in the future, I think we have to try to engage our community and how we're going to improve. As you said, we have some very vulnerable children and I think COVID kind of showed to center society two things. One is it separated the haves and the have-nots. You know, the really wealthy people in our country have become stunningly wealthier and we have, while we have tremendous amount of unemployment, and I think that's impacting our community also. We have kids whose children are, we have kids whose parents aren't working and struggling. We have people sharing, since sharing technology, we have kids that don't have Wi-Fi and we need to be, we need to make sure we as a community, I think it was a school community, have a moral obligation to, again, to teach our most vulnerable children and those are our most vulnerable children. We know that we have students that being at home is not a great situation for them and parents struggle to figure out, do I bring these kids to school? What do I do with my kids if I work all day in a job? I have to go to work as opposed to some people who can work from home. So I'm concerned about this kind of disparity that we see in our community and how to fix that. I think we have to engage our community a lot more. I think we have some wonderful community opportunities. We have Boys and Girls Club, so we have a variety of things that we can do to try to engage the community to help us move forward in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Speaking of community engagement, that's our next question. Community engagement and communication. Now, there seems to be a question of real engagement. There are nonprofits that are out there that attempt to engage and assist the district. There's community appointments to advisory boards that don't necessarily seem to reflect the demographics of the district. Board members are not required to respond or to engage to presenters at the meetings. And then there's some question regarding the effectiveness of the learner profile. What will you do to ensure that there is true community engagement? How will you work with nonprofits and other organizations that can provide assistance and resources? How will you ensure that the community involvement is representative of the school population? Mr. Robinson, we'll start with you.
Sure. You know, that's a great question. I have worked in multiple organizations, you know, I've worked in medical settings and university settings and public school settings. And I sometimes see what I believe you're getting at, Ms. Durden, which is, which is that an institution, whether it's a district, which we'll speak of now, whether it's a medical setting, they, it appears that they're engaged in the community, that when you kind of get down to it, there's a lot of, let's check some boxes, right? Let's say we're engaged in the community. We have people on boards and yet they don't really get to engage. It's not a two-way conversation. And I can speak specifically to GIST. So I'm not being critical of GIST. I'm speaking in general. This has been my experience, is that you end up with communities where the institution, which the district will come and tell the community what's going on, have lunch and then leave and say we're engaged in the community. So if I'm on this board, I'm going to try to change that because that's frustrating for me and I've been on both ends of that. I'm going to try to work to where we truly do have conversations with people, listen to people, make sure our boards are representative of our demographics. I mean, in GIST right now, I think about 46% white, 44% Hispanic, like 4% black. And so we, 1.5% Asian. So I think we need to try to make sure we have balance and we pull from all communities, all voices get to be heard and we listen. And what I mean, listen, we really listen. We don't have listening, we don't say we're listening but not listen. We engage individuals. We have committees that go out and bring data back to the district because I'm a data-driven person. It's kind of a boring thing to say, I know, but I'm a person who likes data and I like this to base decisions. And I think that's one of the things that we need to do to engage our community. Specific to data and the learner profile, as you mentioned, Ms. Durden, I think that's a, that's a great point to bring up. The learner profile, every board meeting I've attended for the last two years, online or in person, always addresses the learner profile. It's often pretty brief, but it's, and I've yet to see the district provide any data to show us how this works. And there are great points to make. It's great to have, you know, group, group, group kids together in groups. It's great to have people who communicate and collaborate, but I've yet to see any data to say this is impactful. We have data to show some other things are impactful and I've always been kind of wanting and wishing that we would see some data presented to the, to the community because, again, one of the roles of the board is to communicate to the community how we're doing. And I'm a person on the board would ask for data. And if we're going to have a learner profile and focus on it, then we need to have some data to show that it's working, that our students are more engaged in positive thinking and critical thinking. So I think my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Dunham.
I can remember all of the components of the question. So our community engagement, really, you know, my experience at this level, our community engagement began, you know, really kind of ramped up in 2013 when we started working on the strategic plan. And that included, you know, I think 280 community members, of which I was one, to kind of develop these really big goals for students. And that included, and they were, they were not meant to be specific, like every student will learn French. I mean, it was really, we want every student to have these measures of these successes. And there were, you know, lots of really global ideas that were presented and that what, you know, is really where the learner profile came from. Our community came together and had a voice to determine what education in Georgetown was going to look like. We wanted them to be successful in their future endeavors and that would include all the elements of the learner profile. It was not our job to tell teachers how to do that. It was then educators' jobs to kind of figure out how to implement. So that's kind of the beginning of how the community engagement really began in Georgetown. And when Dr. Brent was hired, he was really, really adamant that we had more community involvement than GIST had really ever had. And what I think, you know, while that was a great step, the amount of, you know, early actionable community engagement that we've had has been, has been lacking. It's not something that is, has been historically a relationship that school districts have had with community because, you know, they, it's kind of a new way of thinking. So we've got some work to do in that. We've got a couple of committees where our community is really involved to make decisions, Shaq being one. And I know that we're having more involvement with our equity program that's in year two of being developed. So those are opportunities. We've definitely got growth in that area that we need to work on. But from our, you know, from the board standpoint, you know, we are focused on governance and guidance and vision and communication. And so our role with the community is to engage in that way. And I think that, you know, we're working on that. We've, we work with our nonprofits that we've got partnerships with to pick up some of the needs that we have that are really specific. And they're doing a great job with that. There, you know, there, it takes a whole lot more than just academics to really have successful kiddos. And so that's where we really lean on our nonprofits and let them, you know, share their expertise with us.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Well, we have a popular question in Slido. So we know that Georgetown is one of the fastest growing cities in the nation and the population that's coming into Georgetown is diverse. And so what we want to know is how will you address the issue of the dis- And so what we want to know is how will you address the issue of the district staffing to reflect the student population as it relates to the demographics? Ms. Dunham, we'll start with you.
That's a great question and it's one that we are talking about in our district as well. Our, you know, equity is something that is is really on a lot of people's minds right now, as it should be. And it has has really provided us an opportunity to make some systemic changes. So our our equity plan that Cindy Pike is spearheading is, you know, began last year and it's it's taking a really deep dive into our curriculum, our staffing, our hiring process, the way that our schools are run and any systemic inequities that we have. And that's not, you know, that's not a comfortable conversation, but it's one that's absolutely necessary. And and I think that, you know, it is, it is our job to make sure that every kiddo and every staff member feels included and welcome and safe and loved. So that they can do their, you know, do their best work and be successful. I think that we are going to have to make some, you know, some process changes in hiring to make sure that our staff reflects our our kids. I mean, it's important to see people who look like you when you're in an environment and and see, you know, successes for people that that look like you and have that, you know, that relation. It was important to me, you know, to to reflect or to be a representative for low socio ego kids. I think it's important for kids to see that if they come from addiction or incarceration, they can go on to graduate from college and and get a job that really helps people and and, you know, find successes. It's it is important to see how, you know, people that share your same background can move throughout the world. And and I I can't represent kids of color. I understand that. I I think it's important that that kids of color have have role models and and people that they, you know, that really understand what the, you know, what their experience is. So I think we're going to have to make some changes. And that's, you know, that's a hard thing to do, but it's really valuable and it's something that we're committed to and it's something the board is committed to, you know, to exploring. And something that I'm, you know, planning to to fight for and ensure happens. I think it's really important and critical for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Mr. Robinson?
Sure. You know, as you said, you know, our community is growing significantly. We we see that when we get stopped at traffic lights longer than we want to be in Georgetown. But the but the advantage of this is we have to take advantage. We have to kind of be and embrace the diversity that we have. Our districts have become more diverse, kind of slowly over the last decade, but but it's a beautifully diverse community. And we need to take advantage of that instead of trying to almost ignore this is going to happen. You know, I think specifically kind of down in the weeds, what we need to do, and this is to echo what Ms. Dunham said, you know, we need to kind of look at at our staffing. Right now, as I mentioned before, we're about forty six percent white as a student body population, forty four percent Hispanic and about four percent African American, one and a half percent Asian. Our teachers look very different than that. Our teachers, last I looked, about eighty five percent of our teachers are white, fourteen percent Hispanic and less than one percent are black or or Asian American. And so I think we need to be very systematic in how we try to change that. We need to do things. We need to have a diverse application applicant pool. We need to recruit diversely. We have to be purposeful in where we recruit educators to come to our community. And I think as a board, that's something we can we can charge the community with. We can charge the superintendent to do. I mean, this is one of the roles that we have as oversight, is to kind of let the community know what our expectations are. And our expectation should be that we're going to diversify our our faculty and our staff and our administrators to do that. Again, I'm I'm happy that we've hired Ms. Pike to work with Equity. I think that's a very powerful thing. I met with her at a Courageous Conversations meeting a couple of weeks ago and she's very enthusiastic and I think she's working very hard. I think that's really important. I think some of the work that she's been doing comes down to the Educational Trust, which is a national organization, which is really important. And I think it'd be great for us to try to bring, you know, Dr. John King, if we could, who's the president, CEO, to to this community would be a wonderful thing. If we can't do that, then we can invite the Texas representative to come to this educational trust. I think we can do a lot of things to send a message. We're embracing our diversity. The concern I have a little bit, and this is something on the board I would pay close attention to. And again, I'm not saying this is happening with Ms. Pike at all, but I've seen this in other situations. Her job title is Director of the C C M R. And so I I'm not sure if the equity is just like an add on to her job or kind of what their role is, but that's not her title. And sometimes I've seen in organizations where people kind of have an add on job. They have a really hard job to do, but it's it's kind of comes at the end of their other job. And so I would really make sure that's not going to be the case for her to where we make sure we fund and support what she's trying to accomplish. Because this is critically important for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for our audience, could one of you tell tell us what C C M R stands for?
Sure. College Career Military Readiness. Sorry.
Thank you.
Like an old band from the sixties, but
No, 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 no. I just, I just, you know, I want to just make sure that as we're engaging the community and in conversation that they know what we're talking about. So my head is just spinning with more questions that I can't ask personally. But, you know, as we talk about equity and and diversity, that we not only think about the teachers, but we think about the leadership. We need to make sure that there's enough decision makers that reflect the demographics of the community. So I hope that we also touch on that. And speaking on that, I'm going to talk about the future of the district before and then I'll go back to another Slido question. There's a lot of ties. One of the duties of the school board is to provide strategic direction for the district. According to a two thousand and nineteen G I S data, forty four percent of the students are at risk. And thirty three percent of G I S D schools are graded with a D or F in educating children at risk. The faculty ratio and leadership is not reflective of the demographics of what we talked about. And also, in a recent report that was published, G I S D Quarterly Report, it stated that fifteen that that there were fifteen hundred, approximately fifteen hundred students from in the two thousand fourteen fifteen school that were added up to two thousand nineteen and twenty with a fourteen percent growth over the past five years. And then also in that same quarterly report, it talked about students moving out of the district that while ninety six students transferred into G I S D, thirteen hundred transferred out. That's a problem or that's that that appears to be a problem. We would just would like to know what are your priorities for G I S D? What strategic improvements do you see are necessary? And how would you engage the students, faculty, and most importantly, the community to develop and implement strategies for success? Mr. Robinson?
Sure. Sure. Yeah, I think that's a great question. And and you have kind of hit the nail on the head of some of the the concerns in the district is is we have our community, but our schools aren't growing quite at that rate. And and my concern is parents that are kind of looking around at test schools, variety of issues and they're determining whether they want to stay in this district or put their kid in a charter school. And as you've mentioned, and from two thousand and fifteen, we lost about thirteen hundred students. And nine hundred plus of those have gone to charter schools or private schools in the community. And so I do think people are paying attention to this and and it's it's you, it's hard to change a reputation. I think we're, we have a great reputation, but it's a little, it's a little shaky. So I think we have to really pivot quickly and hard to kind of make sure it doesn't get worse. So how do we engage the community? I think that's a critical question that you've asked. And and I look around and think Georgetown's such a great location to do this. You know, I spend time in academia, I work in universities and I look at what resources we have in the community. And I'm in awe of that and think we should take advantage of that, not only locally with Boys and Girls Club. I think we can engage other community members. We have Big of Georgetown, which is, you know, it's for adults with with cognitive disabilities that we can, we can help transition students to, we can have some of our students do some workshops. I think we can do those things. I also think that that we can engage Southwestern University and U M H B and University of Texas. They have amazing programs. When I look at the support that we need in our community, we should, we can get those from those schools. U M H B has American Family Therapy Program. They have to have students with three thousand hours of of supervised supervised experiences. University of Texas has one of the top social work programs in the country. They have to have fifteen hundred hours of supervision. Texas State, which is UT and Baylor, all have school psychology graduate programs where students have to get fifteen hundred, twelve, fifteen hundred hours of supervision. My point is that we have a lot of really inexpensive or free resources that these people give. These are, these are people in training that get experience and opportunities to learn in the community. That's a way to engage just just what is going on in our community, much less we have Sun City, which you, I remember seeing people asking to volunteer and to kind of have these these systematic training programs for people who want to volunteer in our community to help our students. Because, you know, we have students that do well academically. We have students that struggle a little bit and some that struggle a lot. And we need more resources and money is finite. We don't have infinite amount of money. But we can use these resources, these volunteers, these well trained people to try to help our students grow academically and behaviorally and socially. And I think we need to be able to engage our community and take advantage of what we have in our in our area to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Dunham?
Thank you. And yeah, we saw the the statistics of students that were leaving our district. And and we definitely, we don't want that to happen either. When, you know, when our charter schools, our neighboring charter schools opened up, there was some mobility from that. And and, you know, we are taking a look at the data to to figure out, you know, what's going on with why students and families are leaving. Our main priority is to make sure that the families that that we have in our care are supported and receiving the education and the services that they need. And so engaging the community for future success, I think it's time to, you know, we we did the strategic plan in two thousand and fourteen. We revisited it, I think it was last year. I think, you know, enough time has passed that it that we need to go back to the drawing board in terms of a a community summit and really, you know, reassess what our community would like to see for our students. What are the the goals that we have for them? What, you know, how are our parents feeling? What are our teachers thinking? How how are our local nonprofits and and faith communities, you know? What what are they seeing that that we should be focusing on? Because, you know, their input is really valuable. They're the boots on the ground in our community. They're seeing, you know, our families and students every day. And so getting their input for future plans is really critical. We had great success in mobilizing our community for that purpose in, you know, a couple of years ago. And I know that we can do that again. And and while everybody's time is short, you know, our community is has has proven that they're really committed to helping shape our education and our future with our kiddos. So I think that that's really important. We we do have a lot of really brilliant, dedicated groups in our community. You know, we do have great relationships with Sun City, various civic organizations. We've got, you know, our our different faith communities who really step up to provide those wraparound services for our kids. And so making sure that, you know, they're, you know, being effective in that and that help and support is really important. We we hear sometimes that 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 we're really top heavy in administration. We're actually under in administration compared to other districts, both locally and in that are similar in size to ours. So we have to really be careful that we don't, you know, put too many tasks on our administrators' plates. So we need to prioritize which ones are most important. And obviously, student success and community engagement are really important to us. We just need to be careful to make sure that they're getting the attention that they need.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. There seems to be a lot of questions that relate to equity. So I'm going to try to put three questions into one, and this will be our final question before closing remarks. There's question, there's a question that relate to, you know, what would be your plan to engage leadership in addressing the issue of systemic racism, equity and diversity? You know, and what training do you believe is necessary? You know, how should that be addressed in the district? Who should who should take the training? And then finally, looking at special needs students. How would you represent equity in the district with these special needs students that would prefer remote learning? We will start with you, Ms. Dunham.
Okay. So when when Cindy Pike really dove into what the the program that she's working on for equity is, I was really pleased to see how how deep the the investigation was really going to go. How we were going to be looking at curriculum, we were going to be looking at higher discipline and 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 all of the aspects that go into making equity and equality important in our district. We've we support that as a board tremendously. I believe that everybody should go through training that that ensures that that they're not engaging in inequitable practices. I think every teacher, every staff member needs to be aware and go through through training. I think every student needs to go through some 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 training to make sure that they're not engaging in systemic racism and any other activities that can, you know, be culturally insensitive. I think it's important and it's something I really believe in. It's definitely going to be up to the the staff that is working on that project to determine, you know, what those trainings look like and how they're how they're rolled out. That's definitely not a board task, but it is our our job to to provide guidance and 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 set it as a as a goal that we want those things to happen. As far as special needs students, it's something I've been really passionate about for for my entire tenure on the board and and even long before that. Especially, you know, being at Annie Pearl where a lot of the medically fragile and special needs students are concentrated. It's been my role to make sure that, not my role, it's it's been my privilege and my and, you know, my passion to make sure that special needs students are a part of every conversation that we have at our level, medically fragile students especially. Making sure that their needs are met, you know, in whether they're in our classroom or not, you know, what does their learning and access look like? What does their access to programs look like? You know, we're providing a free and appropriate public education to every student that comes through our doors. And and, you know, we have to make adjustments for that. Everything isn't, you know, a cookie cutter academic experience in our schools. And I think that, you know, there have been some missteps in the years past. From what I understand with our special needs programs, we've made so much progress. I know that we're, you know, really supporting those families better than we ever have. They're a high priority for us. And, you know, it's it's something that is a part of all of our conversations when we're talking about processes for for the district to make sure that medically fragile students, Spanish speaking families, all of our typically vulnerable kids have the best experience they can.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. Mr. Robinson?
Sure. You know, I think that that this is a really wonderful topic to bring up. I think is is Ms. Dunham mentioned, it's sometimes kind of awkward to bring up. But it's that's that should, that means we should be talking about things like that, right? It's fine to be uncomfortable in situations. You know, when you look at a systemic racism and how that kind of applies kind of in our culture and how it come, how what it looks like in schools. I mean, I read an article recently kind of talking about, I think the title was a myth of racial progression. You know, how our progress, I should say, the myth of racial progress, how we've kind of improved. And it was interesting kind of look, they did a study that in like in 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 nineteen sixty three, they asked people kind of what they saw the difference in the white and black disparity in in wealth. And at the time, blacks had five percent of the wealth of whites. Five percent of the wealth of whites. But when you ask people, they thought it was fifty percent. They thought they had fifty percent of it. You go to two thousand and sixteen and this gap has gotten even bigger. Two thousand and sixteen, black wealth was ten percent of white wealth in our country, ten percent. Yet when you ask people, they thought it was ninety percent. So they thought that blacks made ninety percent of what whites made when they were making ten percent. So and so the point of this article was that people are kind of saying, well, job well done, right? We we've we've made this progress over all of these years when we haven't made progress. We've made some progress, but not to the extent that you would expect us to be able to make. And I think that's why when you look at two thousand and thirteen, you have that the Supreme Court voted down the, like, the voter, you know, the the Voter Rights Act, you know, because we're done. We we don't have any racial issues in our community anymore, is the message. Yet, you know, Monday, if you watch TV, we saw ten, eleven hours, people standing in line in Atlanta, Georgia to vote. And if you're primarily And these were primarily primarily black and Hispanic people standing in long line to try to vote. So how does that apply to the school district? Right? We're, we're, we're part of the community of the school district too. So I think we have to pay close attention to how we address these issues, how we study these issues and have these uncomfortable conversations at times. And I think it's critically important for us to be able to do to address equity. As I mentioned before, I think we need to really invest and make sure that people who are 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 doing the training, know how to do training. And I agree with Ms. Dunham, everybody should get this training, right? Our teachers, our staff, our board members, our administrators, everybody should get this training. In my experience, it's not a one-shot training. Again, back to I mentioned earlier, kind of a check the box training. See, we trained, we're good, everybody now knows how to do this. I think that that doesn't make a lot of sense. In a few seconds left, I want to echo also special education, which is really my background is in this. Yeah, we have to do a significant amount to help students there because we have to look at our vulnerable populations and people can be, as I mentioned before, it could be from a low socioeconomic status to a disability. We have to take care of all those. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, we're reaching the end of our conversation. And as we wrap up, there's so many great questions, okay, in Slido. So there's a lot of anonymous questions. I just want to encourage you that have these questions to reach out to these candidates, reach out to the current board, because these are excellent questions that they need to be asked. And hopefully, there will be some action behind them. But as our final wrap-up question, I'm going to go ahead and add one of the Slido questions to it. We want to ask you, what makes you the right candidate for citizens to vote for as the G I S D Board of Trustees place five? What is your vision for the future? Now, as there's, there's students that are requesting to, or G I S D is considering remote learning to those outside of the district, I want you to kind of including your wrap-up. How do you plan to to address the ones that are in the district and ensure that you're not leaving them behind also? And then finally, as you think about all of these issues, how are you going to garner garner support of the other board members to ensure that there's action that's actually taken? Mr. Robinson, we'll begin with you.
Sure. Okay, I heard that echo, but it went away. So again, why, why should you vote for me? I mean, that's the question that we're being asked. And what is my vision? I've explained in my background, I think I have intensive work in this in this field. I understand kind of the questions to ask, the kind of the answers that we should be able to receive back. And and understand my role as a board member. As I said, I'm rotating off of a six-year stint as a board member at a college up in New York where I understand the role that we have a university president and this person runs things and we monitor and guide. But within that, you do send a message to the community, what you're, what is important to you. And that is what the board can do. What is important to our community is driven by the seven people on the board. And and we have to make it clear in my mind that what is the most important thing we do is educate our students. We have to make sure our students have a basic understanding of reading, writing and math. And I think we're struggling to do that at this point. And the concerns I have is that of our our tests, our schools that did not do well on star the last couple of years, they're middle school and elementary school students. So we have this group of students that are kind of navigating through the system that are behind. And we have to figure out what to do to get these kids to catch. And it's not easy to catch students up. It's kind of like a marathon. So it's a marathon and these students are a little behind. They're a mile behind, some are a mile and a half behind. And it's hard to get kids to run faster to catch those that are already running faster. Anyway, that's how they got a mile and a half behind. So we have to figure out a way to do that. And there's there are systems out there to do that. There's multi-tiered systems of support or M T S S, which is kind of like RTI, which is Response Intervention. In essence, there are ways for us to be systematic in working with our kids to help the kids that need a little more, provide them those services and those that need a lot more to provide them specialized services. And I think we do that by helping engage our community to come in and do this. It's kind of like a tier one, tier two, tier three system of education. And we can get a lot of support in the community to do that. We can bring Sun City people in, as I mentioned earlier. So we can do a lot of things to do that. So I bring an expertise to to help push us in the direction to do some of these things and and to work with other board members. There's six other board members. And, you know, I've spent my career working in groups to try to get people to make decisions. I've, I don't think I've ever been the boss of anything. You have to figure out when that is. So I'm always having to work with people to help guide. And that's why I use a lot of data to make decisions, you know, data. While it may sound kind of boring, but if you use evidence to make your decisions, I think people tend to rally around that. We have opinions on things, but if we use data to guide them, I think we'll be better. So I think it's a chance for you to decide whether you want to go in a different direction. And I think I can bring that fresh look in a different direction to the, to our community and to our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, Ms. Dunham.
Thank you. What makes me the right candidate for this job? Wow, that's kind of hard. Not because I think that I am a professional educator, which I'm clearly not. But I I think that, you know, I didn't wake up one day and decide that I wanted to be a school board trustee. You know, I spend a lot of time in our community, you know, getting to know families, rolling up my sleeves and and doing the work, passing out meals at Annie Pearl for ten weeks. Saw you check there. That was great, dropping off masks. It doesn't, it doesn't take a degree in, you know, in education to provide strategic governance to a school board or to a district. What it does take is, you know, a commitment to students and families and teachers. And that's, you know, that's what I have provided. I've really moved the needle for vulnerable families in my time on the board. Yeah, I created the the sports pass that helps families get into their kids' sporting events for twenty dollars all year long. Have made sure that we are better engaging our Spanish-speaking community with translated materials and printed materials. Made sure that vulnerable families, medically fragile families are a part of every conversation that we've had. I believe that my commitment to the social emotional wellness of students has really made an impact. I'm also really data-driven as well. I've asked and pushed for metrics when, you know, when we set board targets. You know, I demand that we have metrics for them and more assessment data so that we can better make decisions. Those are wonderful things. My vision for for the future of G I S D is is an academic experience that is tailored and customized for every student. And and it starts with our students here. You know, we were discussing having out-of-district transfers and 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 remote learners from other places. But our priority is our students here. So making sure that our kids that live in our community that we know and love and know their families and are are part of our everyday, those kids are taken care of. I want to make sure that that, you know, we're not overextending ourselves. It's something that, you know, I bring up in our meetings, you know, as often as as is necessary that, you know, we're going to take care of our people first. And that comes to budgeting and and processes and all of the things that make a district run. I've proven my commitment to this district. I have helped families that really need help. And I would really love to to continue this work that's so important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. And thank you, Mr. Robinson, for taking the time out and having this very important conversation. We thank you, the community, for participating, for taking the time out to listen, to ask those great questions. We know that this is just the beginning. We wish the best of luck to both of you. And we just hope that, you know, as a result of probably all of the candidate forums that you participated in, whomever wins will keep the community engaged, that there will be an increase in involvement, an increase in working with nonprofits, that there be an increase in diversity and staff and administration, all of those things. And we'll check back with you and see. We just want to make a quick reminder, early voting has already begun. If you have voted already, please encourage someone else to vote. Remember to remind them to not only to 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 go vote, but to go with your patience and most importantly, go with your ID. It's your right, it's your duty, it's your responsibility. And if you had need information about where to go vote in Williamson County, we're encouraging you to go to www.willco.org. You can go to the GCCMA website at www.gccmatx.org or you can go to segcc.org for more information. This has been a wonderful two weeks. We want to thank GCCMA and SEGCC for coordinating this. I want to thank the President of GCCMA, Ms. Paulette Taylor, and the Executive Director of SEGCC, Mr. Chuck Collins, for your support. Again, thank you, community. Please get out there and vote. And thank you, Ms. Dunham and Mr. Robinson for participating today.
Hello Georgetown community. The Georgetown Cultural Citizens Memorial Association, in association with the Southeast Georgetown Community Council, brings you greetings and voter information today. November twenty twenty is a historic time. As we deal with a global pandemic, we are electing our next president, a new mayor, city council members, school board trustees and countless other races. In Georgetown and throughout the country, they are expecting record turnout. So we want to take some time out to encourage you to vote. Here are three simple tips that we believe that can help you. First, know when you can vote. Early voting begins Tuesday, October thirteenth through Friday, October thirtieth, from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. And on Sundays, October eighteenth through the twenty-fifth, from one PM to six PM. Second, know where you can vote. For specific voting locations, visit www.willco.org/departments/elections/voting. We encourage you to vote early to avoid election day crowds. And third, there are no strip ticket voting this year. So completing your ballot may take a little time. You can print out a sample ballot by going to the Williamson County website, click on voter lookup and sample ballot. You can mark your selections and bring them to the poll. So now you're ready to plan your vote. Thank you for listening and don't forget to share this information and encourage your family, friends, coworkers and neighbors to vote.